I'd like to call the meeting to order and we can stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone for coming and welcome back to our boardroom here. So, we are very happy to be back here. We thank Windermere for hosting us for a year and a half. So, we have no visitors wishing to speak. We have no written communication that I'm aware of. Reports on boards and committee. I'll let you go first.
Just a quick update. We had a brief meeting. Laura Wazinski, Mr. Penella, Mr. Stanley and I. Just to have a quick introduction to the auditor from the office of the New York State Comptroller's Office. She just basically outlined what her process is going to be, how long it might take, which was months, which was surprising to me. But anyway, so she is in residence and is going to begin her audit. Hopefully, all goes well. I'm sure it will.
Great.
Was there some sort of focus?
They don't decide the focus until she starts looking into things and then if she sees certain areas that have maybe some irregularities, then she will focus on that area.
Okay. Next would be choosing, nominating three BOSI, three people for the BOSI's board. This year, there's one person cycled off that board, a longtime member. So, there is two incumbents running and one open seat. And there happens to be four people running for three seats. So, it is our duty to appoint something, or to nominate somebody to, so then they get on the ballot. And then, is it two weeks? So, in two weeks then?
No, I'm sorry. It's April, the middle of April, 17 days.
So, our second meeting in April, we will then decide who we're actually voting for of the people that have been nominated. So, all four could end up being on the ballot. So, we just have to nominate three, right? So, we have the two incumbents. We have Mark Mecca, who used to be a Williamsville School Board member. I think he sent everybody something, or I've shared what he's sent before. And we have another gentleman named Eric Forenstein, who is also a former Williamsville School Board member. We have Andrew Loeb, who is an incumbent. And we have Mary, I don't know if I said, Boosie? Who is an incumbent as well. So, I don't know if anyone wants to say anything about any of them, knows any of them, has any preferences, wants to make any?
Based on my working with Mary Boosie and Andrew Loeb through ECASB, I would recommend to the board that we nominate Mary, Eric Forenstein, and Mark Mecca.
I second that. That would have been exactly what I said to him.
Does anyone have any?
No, I second Laurie, and Andrew, and Mary. But Andrew's one of the two guys I've ever met. We didn't finish the meeting.
No, I don't recommend Andrew Loeb.
Oh, you don't?
No.
I thought you did.
Eric, Mark, and Mary.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, we missed, I heard it the other way too.
Yeah.
So, is that what you were?
I was thinking exactly what Laurie was thinking. But I'm open, really the one I, you know, the woman who's for reelection, I think is the most impressive of all of them. I feel the most strongly about her. And I felt Mark Mecca had a very good background as well. Apart from that, I'm probably six of one, as the other and the other two, so.
I?
Yeah.
I don't know Eric, so I have no opinion.
Yeah.
The only thing with these BOSI things work is you can only have one person represent the school district. So, just say those two people got, you know, one came with the most votes and the second one came with the second most votes.
They can't both be on the board?
No, so the person with the most votes would get it. And then, the person with the third most votes would get it. Because you can't have, you can't have. And that's why these things, people only run at certain times because if someone, you know, you happen to live in a district that federally has representation, you can't run.
Yeah.
Very interesting way to do it, so.
So, that's Forenstein and Mecca are the two former members though?
They're both former Williamsville School Board members, so I'm assuming they both live in.
They're not both, they're not, neither one is on the board right now, though.
No, but they're both resident of Williamsville School District, which is what I think you said.
Yeah, that's right. I'm just pointing out.
I don't know if that changes my opinion. But you thought Mr. Loeb was a good option?
We get those finance committees, we're going through those budgets and he's just very degenerated. I mean, he will focus on the cost of copy paper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, in light of that, maybe the two, Williamsville can't have two people. Then, I would suggest we do, from my pers, the two incumbents and Eric.
I mean, I suspect, we only have to nominate by one district, so I have a feeling that they'll all be nominated.
I see. Oh, really?
Yeah.
So, it really doesn't matter what we have?
I heard, I did, I did get a note, somebody let me know that Eric.
No, I know, I get, I get.
Eric was nominated already by Williamsville at their last board meeting. I was informed.
So, it really doesn't matter what we?
We're just required to do a nomination, so. We, the vote doesn't come for two more meetings, so.
He's fine. So, Mary, Andrew, and Eric?
I will say, I did invite both, so I did reach out to both Eric and Mr. Mecca since they're new and stuff, and offered them the opportunity to come speak if they wanted to, to whatever. And Mr. Mecca said he was going to, and Mr. Forenstein just sent more information, so. Here we are. All right. I'm turning it over for the superintendent's report. Is there any other board and committee meetings? I don't think, it actually goes on the agenda and then we, it's part of a vote when we vote on the agenda later. Do we have any other board and committee reports? Then I'll turn it over to Mr. Penella for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We have two items tonight, a budget development update. But first, we have the pleasure of hearing from Mrs. Flanagan and Mrs. Stager from Windermere with a Windermere building update. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. Let's talk about Windermere. All right, we are here today to talk about our fantastic school. And we're going to highlight some, some interesting things that we're doing. And we're also going to give you an update on the wonderful things that our students have been working on as well. So, tonight's agenda, we're going to share with you some of our lessons learned from last year. We're also going to give you an update on the ways in which we support our faculty and our students in the area of wellness. And then, always in Windermere, we always maintain and keep a laser-like focus on instruction. So, we want to give you a highlight on our instructional focus. So, first, some of the lessons learned from last year. One of the things Mrs. Stager and myself did was we surveyed our faculty and staff. And we asked them two important questions. What did you learn from last year that has enhanced or helped your instruction this year? And then, what did you learn or benefit from the use of technology last year during that pandemic that has helped or enhanced this year? So, we want to share with you some of those main areas that were focused on from the feedback from them. First was parental involvement. Across the board, the teachers have felt that the virtual options provided to the parents have shown an increase in parental involvement and attendance. Most particularly through our parent-teacher conferences, as well as just communicating with them. The ease and everyone sort of being forced to learn Zoom really increased that participation and communication. The frequency of parent communication increased. And that was seen through some of the programs that we are utilizing through CSO and those platforms. It made it very easy for parents to communicate and talk to their teacher. Teachers were also to gain an insight and a window inside the students' lives at home. They were really able to see where they live, how they live, their environment. This helped them to better support their needs in class. And most importantly, relationships. It enabled them to really build strong relationships with students because they ultimately learned more about them.
And another area that was highlighted in that teacher feedback was the integration of technology in the classroom instruction. So, because of the hybrid and virtual models that they had experience with in the past year, teachers are really integrating technology much more seamlessly and much more frequently in the classroom. This has allowed for a really high level of strategic differentiation in the classroom. We're seeing students, you know, working at different levels, right, different ability levels, needing to work at different paces. And because of the instructional applications that the district has provided on our devices, really, students are able to access really worthwhile learning opportunities that meet them at their level through these devices and through the technology. They're finding that students can work independently with these devices. They can say, I need you to go on CSO, complete this assignment, and they can go back to their desk, put on their headphones, and do it. So, they're sustaining attention on a screen, which, you know, may or may not be a great thing. But we are seeing that independence really soar in our students when they're using that technology during a lesson. We're also seeing an increase in small group instruction. Not only did this come from teacher feedback, but we're seeing it every day when we walk around in the classrooms. Because of that wide range of ability, which I think is a result of the pandemic, we are seeing a need for the small group instruction versus whole group all day long, right? So, our teachers aren't teaching to the middle. They're really targeting their instruction to a small group of students and exactly what they need. And because of their ability to integrate technology, everybody in the class is getting a worthwhile experience because maybe five students are working with them, five students are working with a TA, maybe five students are working collaboratively on a paper pencil project, but then five other students could be working on an engaging activity at their level on a computer. So, their ability to integrate technology has really increased the small group instruction time, which in turn increases the instruction that students are getting. And then finally, tech readiness. Typically, September, October, teachers are teaching routines, procedures, expectations. And then also like, this is a Chromebook, this is how we turn it on, this is your password, this is where we find it. This year, they didn't need to do that. So, although, yes, we're back to school, we need to learn those expectations, students came in so much more ready to use the technology. They're like, yeah, I know the Chromebook, I lift it up, I log in, I'm good to go, I can get to Tiger Links. So, they really came in with just a higher level of tech readiness. So, then with all of this kind of encompass, our teacher self-efficacy and technology has just gone through the roof. I think a year ago, had we asked them, hey, let's make a lesson on CSO that meets the essential elements of instruction and is worthwhile for your students, targeted at their needs, and it's all digital, I think they would have, right, had a panic and a little bit of anxiety, had to collaborate with peers, maybe taken them a half a day. And now, they could do it probably in a second. So, really, they have that strong belief in themselves, like, I can do it, which I think we all know is kind of half the battle, right? When someone believes that they can do it, it's going to come out a lot stronger and better. So, our teachers have that, that increased self-efficacy and that confidence. And just one little tiny snippet of an example of that is our PE teachers, which you'll see Mr. Damiani and Mrs. Blair up there. They, as a result of the work they've done over the last year, they now kind of have this video library on YouTube of them teaching lessons. And when a teacher is confident in their ability to use something, I think they have the ability to be more creative, right? So, this is just one example where if they're absent, they can leave one of these videos for a substitute and the student can still access that curriculum. Even in the Wellness Center, some of the lessons, there is a screen in there and they can play some sort of fitness activity. And it's at their fingertips and it's ready for them. So, this has been great to see. And then, the second pillar we kind of want to highlight tonight is how we are focusing on student and staff wellness and the ways in which we're doing so. So, obviously, we know social emotional learning is extremely important, especially now. But our teachers reported to us that they feel this is a strength in our classrooms at Windermere. And I think this comes from our responsive classroom initiatives that has been ongoing. But also from last year, really, the message from the leadership in the district was social emotional learning is a priority. So, they felt that last year. And then finally, this year, they really are seeing that need in our students. The need is there, it's obvious. And so, our teachers reported, they feel like they're doing a very good job with this in the classroom and that it's a strength at Windermere. And that also goes back to this mindset that we have and continue to have that we know as teachers, as educators, that academic growth that we hope to see is not going to happen if we're not putting that priority on the social emotional well-being of our students. So, that mindset is living and breathing in our hallways and we're going to highlight some of the ways we've done that.
So, how can we support the social emotional learning and support teachers wanting to support their students? So, this is a great box set series and it's titled, "The Little Spot of Emotions." And we have a teacher, we're fortunate to have a teacher at Windermere, Kristin Sholdes, who is a New York State Master Teacher who participates in some incredible staff development provided through that program through New York State. And from that, she comes back and she often shares these little golden nuggets of these great resources. This is something that we were able to purchase for every single teacher in August. And what this does is each spot is a different character trait. A little spot of happiness, a little spot of tolerance, a little spot of acceptance and patience. And it's written in a really kid-friendly form that teachers utilize when they're doing a read-aloud with students. So, from that, we were able to develop some staff development sessions through, through our morning faculty meetings. And we also, the kit comes with developmentally appropriate tools that we're in turn looking to purchase for next year. So, with that, we wanted to highlight, this is Kristin Sholdes, who is the Master Teacher, as well as Danielle Masiak, a special ed teacher. She is a leader in our building in terms of a turnkey trainer for a responsive classroom. A lot of this resource and responsive classroom, they really overlap and align, which is why this resource was so important to purchase and give to our teachers. So, you'll see Kristin and Danielle show you a little bit more about these resources.
Social emotional learning is comprised of teaching students self-awareness, self-management, relationship skills, and responsible decision making.
This year, we realized how important social emotional learning was for our students and teachers. The Little Spot Books are one way that we explicitly teach how to manage, identify, and recognize our feelings in a big way.
I feel excited when I look at you.
We use the Spot Books to teach and recognize these feelings. We also use these Spot Books to help manage our coping strategies to deal with these big feelings, such as taking a deep breath, blowing out bubbles, rainbow stretches, and talking to dogs.
The Little Spot Books provide our emotional grid. The emotional grid has been extremely helpful this year for students to understand we have a wide variety of emotions. Each emotion has a book that explicitly teaches what the emotion looks like and sounds like and ways we can use our coping mechanisms.
One way we use these Spot Books in our classroom is to explicitly teach what those feelings look like and feel like when they're happening. We try to teach these feelings and how to manage them when the students are not in crisis. So, when they do come into a problem or a big feeling, they know how to manage it and use strategies to deal with their problems.
We're fortunate enough to provide those for our pre-K classrooms as well.
All right, so this might seem really small because it's a typical thing that happens in our school, but it was on pause, right, for a year. So, this was really exciting to just be able to share with you that our huge character education assembly where we honor superheroes of character came back. So, for the first time, we were able to gather in our auditorium and have not just one, but six assemblies, right, to make sure that we were all socially distanced. But for our first graders, first time in the auditorium, first time, what's an assembly? So, it was just a really exciting day and something that did bring joy to the school community. So, we were able to collaborate with our high school athletes, so the high school basketball players and cheerleaders came down and they shared really inspirational stories about our character traits and really brought those character traits to life, right? So, students could see, oh, that boy up on stage, he looks just like me and he talked about courage. And really, it just continues to support and foster the character education initiative that we have in our building. So, this was a very exciting day. And then, we also had our fun run in October. So, coming back to school, full force, five days a week, this happened in October. So, it was like the perfect event to bring our school community together outside safely gathering. Again, we had six fun runs, each grade level had their own. And we did raise an incredible amount of money. But it's a two-week program and as a school, we made the commitment not to focus on money. So, like, never did we make a big deal out of prizes, never did we talk about getting money, never did we do any of that. And we still raised an incredible amount. We focused on the character education traits that are taught within the two weeks and then on building the school community. The classes make a flag and they're proud to be part of that team. Every single child in our building gets a T-shirt that says, "Windermere Elementary." And so, that day, it's like the culminating event of these two weeks where they get to come together, they run outside, families lined our sidewalks. Like, that picture on the far right is, I think, one of my favorite pictures of my experience at Windermere. Yeah, that little boy high-fiving his dad. So, the kids were just so excited and really it brought so much joy. And the Windermere pride was just emanating from this event. And in the middle, you see that pink unicorn. That was Mrs. Flanagan, our Billy. To motivate our students to just get excited. She rode a scooter the entire day. And I'm telling you, I've never laughed so hard. All day, every time I saw her, everyone was just laughing. So, really, just another way to bring that social emotional well-being to the forefront and make sure that we, we have joy in these experiences in an elementary school.
You missed when she was duct taped to the wall.
I did.
I missed that one. I told her, I have a picture still.
Like, last week.
Cause it came up on Facebook.
That would raise a lot of money, too.
I could laugh just thinking about it. Wish we had a video to show you. So, then last year, we did form a staff wellness committee for the first time to make sure that we were keeping our staff's wellness in the forefront just as much as our students. So, we have probably approximately 10 teachers on the committee, ranging from kindergarten to fifth grade and some specialists as well. And really, our focus is just how can we improve staff wellness and make sure that people are happy and joyful and improve morale and make sure they know we're thinking about them. So, lots of different things have popped up. Lots of different initiatives have come out of this committee. So, I just wanted to highlight a couple of them. So, the first one, loop the lot. Again, a really simple idea. But when it's a sunny day outside and the buses have left and teachers still have about 30 minutes in their day, we'll just make an announcement, if you want to come out and loop the lot. And we'll get, teachers come out and we just literally take a loop around the bus loop. But it's sunny, we talk, hey, how was your day? You could just say hi to a friend and you get a little exercise. So, that was like a quick way to like, a lot of teachers look, we just need time, we need time for self-care. So, we tried to be creative in ways in which we could find that time. So, again, simple idea, but teachers really love it. Messages to colleagues. Throughout the year, we've found different ways. That winter candy gram is just one example, but our teachers would like pay 50 cents. The money would go to our children's fund. And then, they could get a candy cane with a note and send a message to a colleague. So, a colleague comes in in the morning, gets a little candy and a note, like, it brightens your day. Again, very simple, but impactful. The Faculty Staff Spotlight. So, this was part of Windermere, I think about 10 years ago. You brought it to Windermere. And this came up as like, we want this back. So, in our Friday forecast every week when we push out from the main office, like, the updates, what's happening in the next two weeks, this is now a part of that. And it just highlights a faculty member and a staff member and gives like a little paragraph about them. You know, what do they like to do for fun? What is some really interesting fact no one would know? And it sets you up for success in the hallway. When you see a new colleague, you're like, oh, my gosh, I didn't know you liked to do that. Or, oh, my gosh, tell me more about this experience. And again, really simple, but creates these opportunities for connection within the building. The Buddy Pass. Each faculty member got a little free pass for a faculty meeting. They get to submit it to Julia or myself and say, you know, I'm not going to be there on Wednesday and this is the person who's going to catch me up on what I missed. So, again, finding a little glimpse of time where they could sleep in, they could grab a cup of coffee or maybe they have an orthodontist appointment with their kid and they just can't come. So, that has been a huge hit. Everybody was really excited about that. Like, one little buddy pass for an emergency or some extra time.
But they still love my meetings.
Yeah.
Just want them to stay.
Yeah. The Care Cart. So, that little picture you see is actually a door tag that teachers will get on their door when they're getting room service that day. So, three times a year, we have this big cart that's like filled with goodies and cold waters and seltzers. And we've actually added like stress-free hand lotion and some essential oils. And the members of the staff wellness committee give up their planning and they go around to a zone in the building and deliver these treats. So, again, just a way to bring some joy and happiness to every day. And within all of this, we've really strengthened our partnership with the PTA. They've been so incredibly supportive for our staff wellness and have been able to fund some of these. And it's just another bonus that's been coming out of all of this.
Last but not least, we want to take a moment and talk to you about how we are continuing to maintain our instructional focus. So, at grades kindergarten, first and second grade, we identify through our MTSS process, which is where we look at the data and we identify that there's a need for phonemic awareness and phonics instruction at our primary grade levels. So, from that, we worked closely with Dr. Lynn Shanahan in her office to help support that with a great new resource, and it's the Hegarty Model of Instruction. And you're going to see a glimpse of this in a kindergarten classroom of a kindergarten teacher doing this Hegarty Model of Instruction, which is really basic phonics scales and phonemic awareness. But one thing to note, why we wanted to highlight this is that all teachers are using this at the primary levels and all of them have said, oh, my gosh, it is working, it's working well, the retention of skills is there. So, it's been really widely supported by the teachers. So, take a look.
Hi, I'm Danielle Borny, a kindergarten teacher at Windermere Old Ride Elementary. In this video, you will observe my students participating in a Hegarty drill. Hegarty is a kinesthetic program that targets eight phonemic awareness skills and two early literacy skills. My students participate in a complete Hegarty drill daily and the effects have been notable. The number of students who can identify, remember, and sequence phonemes is greater than ever before. Their ability to decode and write difficult words is stronger than previous cohorts because it has improved their ability to manipulate the sounds within the English language.
Okay, we also have two book studies happening in our building right now. So, one is an extension of our responsive classroom initiative that continues to live and breathe in our building. But this is teacher-led by a responsive classroom team and all the faculty members are reading this book on different behaviors. And so, the entire faculty participates on certain faculty meetings throughout the year. And they actually collaborate around topics within this book that's facilitated by the team. But then they talk, it's a vertical family is what we call it. So, like, one kindergarten, one first, one second, all the way up to fifth grade. They meet together and they talk about the chapters in the book. So, really well-received. And then, after these faculty meetings, we actually turnkey the training and the content to all of our aides-in-assistance. So, we're just continuing that common language and common response to behavior within the building with all the faculty and staff. And then, second, we do have an integrated co-teaching book club that's happening. One of these is happening at each of our four buildings. And it comes out of the Professional Development Plan for the Integrated Co-teaching Initiative that's happening, the full ICT. So, each integrated co-talk classroom has one certified special ed teacher with them all day long. So, it's happening at all four buildings around the same text, which really allows us to have that foundational understanding. We're all reading the same book, we all have that knowledge. But it also gives us time to collaborate as a building team, right? So, 13 teachers, there's six partnerships, and then one partnership, the partner went out of maternity leave. So, we only have 13 at the moment, but it would be 14. Meeting and talking together and problem-solving and sharing ideas. And it really, it's incredible. The professionals are incredible, they want to learn, they want to perfect their craft. And they like to learn from each other and ask questions. I stumbled on this last week, how can you help me? So, being able to facilitate this has filled my cup as an assistant principal. If you know me, you know this is one of my passions in education. But it's also, we're seeing the results from our teachers, they're happy with the time. And they're changing their instruction in the classroom to best use those two teachers to make it a dynamic atmosphere. to best use those two teachers to make it a dynamic atmosphere.
And some other instructional highlights. We noticed through our grade level liaison meeting, one theme that came up was students are really lacking in their math facts, in the fluency, and knowing those good old-fashioned multiplication and division facts. And that unfortunately is one of the outcomes of the pandemic. So how can we bring a focus to that? And so we've identified some great ways in which we're working on that in our building right now and sharing a lot of that, again, with Dr. Shanahan and the district math committee. Also through our MTSS committee, we've identified ways in which we can utilize the additional staffing through our AIS department and how we can now give more targeted support, not only in the area of academics, but in behavioral needs as well. And then lastly, our Amplify Science. We are off and running with it, and it's been really well-received. The teachers are really rolling up their sleeves, they're digging deeper, they're unpacking new units, they're learning a lot more about science, and the students are really enjoying that hands-on approach. And to end our presentation today, we wanted to share our first annual Global School Play Day. This was a day just of play. And yes, that's right. In this screen-driven society, myself, a mother of three teenagers, some of you can relate, all children, right? It's a screen-driven society, and what we're finding is they do not get an opportunity to just negotiate play, talk, build on those social skills. So we tried this the first year, and as you can imagine, it was a huge success, not only from the students, from the teachers, and from many of the parents. We did this on February 18th, which is the day before February break, and it's only a half a day of school. So we really increased attendance on that day as well. But it also supports our students' social and emotional needs. And it was really no screens, no structure, just play. And we wanted to highlight some of that for you in this video.
There's been a continuous erosion in children's freedom and opportunity to play, to really play, play freely. This has been documented in various ways by historians and social scientists, and I'm old enough that I've seen it in the course of my lifetime. Play, by definition, is self-controlled and self-directed. It's the self-directed aspect of nature of play that gives it its educative power.
So one of the things we've noticed is in children that we've seen an increase in anxiety and depression. There's a decrease, loss of control, decrease in empathy, that was a big one. Screens so much, children don't have an opportunity to see the facial expression of someone that could impact them negatively. It's easy to say things on screen, but they don't get that reaction. Increase in narcissism, and this is from the research that is showing that. And there's also a decrease in creative thinking.
Any social scientist will tell you, correlation doesn't prove cause and effect. But in this case, I think that there is good reason to believe that the decline in play is the cause of these deleterious changes.
So needless to say, Windermere now has an annual tradition. We'll be holding our annual school day of play. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you. And we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question. So if it wasn't directed, how did the kids get to decide what they were going to play with? How does that work?
So there was a flyer that went home to the parents. And it outlined, this is the day of play, and then students can bring in any game or toy that they like. Kids brought in dolls, Arby's, Uno, Connect Four, any board game that they have. And on the letter, it notified parents, they can't even bring anything that has a battery. I mean, no electronics. And the teachers were amazed at how they sat together and the kids would teach each other a new game. And they also did outside play as well. So we had the students come in, ready to spend part of the morning outside, and then inside, they had indoor play.
So how has it been since after we came back from break and no more masks? I mean, I've heard some teachers say, oh my God, I've seen my kids', you know, the kids' faces, or they're kind of getting to know each other again. I mean, how has it been in the?
It's been wonderful. We have students still wearing a mask, and you know, we have staffs still wearing a mask, and it's normalized it. It's really not, you don't even notice it sometimes when someone has a mask on or when they don't wear a mask. But it's been wonderful, just for them, not for us, to not only see their faces, but for them to see our faces as well. It's been really great. And just to all be together. And we feel that we're getting back every little bit, you know, a little step. And obviously, that's the nature of the pandemic. You know, with data, things change, and we're moving slowly. I think we've done a fantastic job, and I think our students, faculty, and our parents have been extremely supportive of how it's going. And the kids are enjoying these new experiences, especially without a mask.
Yeah, it even occurred to me that when you watch the video in Danielle Horni's class with the Hegarty model and her teaching phonemic awareness, what a difference it makes not having a mask on so the kids can hear the teacher enunciate and hear the sounds of the letters and the combinations of the letters when you put them together, excuse me, together. So it's a significant difference in instruction, especially in our primary grades.
Also, the social skills and the benefit. Kids are social in nature, and it's all about reading facial expressions. You know, sometimes I would have to say to students, you know, when you see my face and it's not happy, you know, we need to learn these things, or these are some of the rules that we have in school. And they monitor their behavior, right? Based on adults' reaction and based on our facial expressions. So it's hard for them to figure things out and to learn from that without them seeing our faces. And also seeing my face of joy, and what a great job, and let's celebrate. They don't see that either way. So that's one thing we've noticed as well, too.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Mrs. Bozinski will give us an update on budget development.
She has a full day of play as well?
Yeah. More than just one half-day.
She gets to play with, she gets to play with spreadsheets.
Well, while Mrs. Bozinski's getting ready, I just wanted to mention, I'm sure you've all heard the wonderful news about our boys' basketball team. But they won the Class A II sectional championship, and then they won the Class A crossover game, which allows us to represent Section 6 against Section 5, Rochester. And then just last weekend, we beat Pitt-Mendon in the regional game and punched our ticket to the Final Four this weekend in Glens Falls. So they will be playing New Hartford from Section 3 on Saturday at 10:45 a.m. And if they win, then they'll play the winner of the other semifinal game on Sunday at 1 p.m. So we are, just today, Mr. Wheaton and I were talking, and now Mr. Lonzac will be coordinating a watch party at the high school for students that aren't able to make the trip to Glens Falls. And they'll be able to go and, you know, get a snack and a treat at the high school cafeteria. We'll be purchasing a one-month membership, soon to be canceled, to the NFHS streaming service that we will, that will allow us to stream the game. I hear the broadcasts are pretty good. So not only will we have, I think, a big crew traveling to Glens Falls to support our team, we'll also have people back home here supporting our team as well. So that's very exciting, and I'm very proud of all of our student athletes and coaches. They're fun to watch, they're a great group of young men. They play really well together, and I wish them luck this weekend in Glens Falls. In addition, I also wanted to mention, not only is Chris Kenzie our head basketball coach, but you heard reference to master teacher Kristen Schuldice in the presentation from Windermere. Mr. Kenzie, tonight, was inducted into the master teacher, the new master teacher class at Buffalo State College. So not only is he, you know, excelling on the court with our student athletes, he's also excelling in the classroom with our students there as well. So congratulations to him and all the success that he's bringing to our district. Welcome, Mrs. Bozinski.
Thank you. So tonight, we have the next installment of our budget development presentations. At our last meeting, we spent a lot of time on our revenues and kind of skipped over our expenditures from a prior presentation. So tonight, we'll be diving into those expenditures in more detail and not focusing as much on our revenues. We just have a couple of changes there. As always, we'll be focusing on the blue text, which is new from our last presentation so that you can better see the areas that are changing from what we've already discussed. So in our revenues, we did have a change in our property tax levy. We didn't originally anticipate seeing that changed. We did submit, based on our prior presentation, to the state comptroller at the end of February. But since then, it has been brought to our attention that some potential new pilots with the town are executed, fully executed, so they will be in effect for the 2223 school year. So that does have an impact on our tax levy. It takes our tax levy negative to about negative 0.7%, which is about $268,000 of a decrease. Of that 268, 10,000 of it was a small Bozies change in expense versus aid, which affected our capital exclusion. But overall, the revenue didn't change significantly because when the pilot payments come out of the tax cap, they get added into the revenues as a pilot payment. So there's not a significant change in our overall revenue, but there is a change to the levies specifically in the category that those revenues are attributed to. On the miscellaneous revenues, there is a change because that's where the new pilots are added in. So the increase is 12.4%, or just under $700,000. And that was due to those pilots and the sales tax revenue. So those changes kind of go together. We talked about state aid, we have not made any changes there. And we're looking forward to the enacted budget in early April. And if there are any more changes from where we are now, we'll include that in our next presentation. So here in the blue slot, in the blue, you can see the change in the property tax levy that's allowable in this year to negative 0.7% or is 38. almost 7 million. Where you see the changes in the future years of the tax levy is because we're now going to be applying that formula to a lower number. So those numbers change each of those years. But the capital exclusion is based on projected debt payments and projected aid payments. That didn't change in the future years. We left state aid flat, we didn't change it for this budget, but we did change it for year two because previously, we had included about $560,000 of additional transportation aid with the potential of spending an increased $800,000 in transportation this year. So as we took that out, and we'll talk about that in a minute, that affected year two's projections for state aid. So moving forward in year two and three, we did keep that at a 0% increase. We do anticipate increases in state aid, we just don't know what they are yet. So by keeping them at zero, it helps us see where our true expenditures are going, and it further demonstrates our reliance on that state aid. And we'll talk about that when we get to the overall budget summary. We have the increase in our pilot payments from $435,000 in our current year to $750,000 next year. And that's the two new pilots that were approved by the town of Amherst. Overall, we have a $68.3 million budget, which is just over a 6% increase from the current year's budget. On our staffing changes, so this is the beginning process of our expenditure changes. We have six retirements this year, and they're all teachers. Five in the high school and one in the middle school. And all positions will be replaced. We're not looking to make any reductions through attrition or retirements. In addition to our retirements, we do have some staffing changes. A handful of positions that we're looking to add and a handful of positions that will be transferred to other areas in our district. So for our added positions, we have an art teacher. And this is a 1.0 art teacher that will be shared between the high school and Windermere. And the add of a .6 FTE in the high school further supports the curriculum in the high school with the new facilities that we have in our art wing, based on our current capital project. And the addition of a .4 FTE in Windermere is based on enrollment. So the enrollment in Windermere is growing. And we have one art teacher that serves all 700 kids. So it was proposed to add a .4 FTE teacher at Windermere. For our grounds position, the add there is an additional 1.0 position in our grounds department to help maintain our facilities in the good weather and the bad weather. So we want to make sure that our grounds are to the standard level that we expect at Amherst. We want all of our grounds to be beautiful in the summertime and have snow cleaning and removal in the wintertime for safety. There was a little bit of extra help that would be beneficial there. But we had some money in the budget every year for the facilities department to hire part-time laborers in summer. So it would usually be a couple of part-time, maybe college kids or younger people that would be hired just for a few weeks and would help mow grass and weed whack. Instead of doing that, we'll be able to reduce that budget and then increase the full-time position, which will be more beneficial to the department overall. The central registrar is an add, and something that we've talked about for a couple of years. Currently, the registration takes place in all four of our buildings. So whatever building you live in, whatever building district you live in, you would register in that building. But our central registrar, registration process, having it combined into one person gives us the opportunity to streamline the process, make sure that we have consistency across all four buildings. This person will travel from building to building, so we'll still have that in-person feel when we have new families coming into the district. But it will also allow us to make sure that our procedures and our documents, everything is right where it's supposed to be so that the great services that our district is offering will be for true Amherst residents. The ICT teacher add is based on projected enrollment. So currently, we have, the principals have already started looking at their class sizes for next year. We have, the kids are broken out into classes. And we're okay where we are right now with some of our enrollment, but there are a handful of kids in both buildings that may or may not need additional services. So we wanted to make sure that we had some room in the budget so that come August, when the registrations are in, if we need an additional position in one building or the other, that we had room for it in our budget, and it wasn't a stress right away in August when we have the whole rest of the school year to go. In the middle school, we currently have a .8 FTE science position. That position was recently vacated. So starting next year, we're proposing to increase that a .2 to a full-time science position, which will allow the building to lower some of the class sizes in our science classes. Some of those science classes are pretty full. We want to be able to add a We want to be able to add a section or two to be able to reduce those class sizes to what most of the other classes are.
And that's actually a restoration of a previous reduction that may have been prior to your joining the district?
In athletics, we talked about girls' flag football at a previous board meeting. So this year, it's funded through donations. So next year, we want to add that into our budget, as well as a strength and conditioning coach that will service all of our students and our athletes for three, for all three seasons. So this was also a restoration of a position that existed. This was a cut, I think, in my first or second year here, and we switched to an online strength and conditioning platform. So we'll be eliminating that platform and replacing that with an actual person, which will help facilitate the use of our brand-new fitness centers in both the high school and the middle school, and will better serve all of our students and athletes, spring, summer, fall, and winter.
And you'll notice on your agenda tonight, the jack-of-all-trades, Mr. Chris Kenzie, is going to be our head coach for girls' flag football in our inaugural season.
On the reduction side, we currently have two part-time nurses in our high school, 2.6 nurses, and we will be looking to replace that with a 1.0 full-time position. So that's an individual that's already working in our district and has done a great job. So she will be transferring over to the high school. And then one of the part-time positions will then be available in possibly even a full-time capacity to serve as a substitute or floating nurse based on our needs for next year, absences, testing, COVID-related. You know, we don't really know what next year's going to look like. So this allows us to maintain a little bit of flexibility in our staffing. And then in Smallwood, we currently have three self-contained classrooms. And based on the enrollment, next year, we're only going to need two of them. So that classroom contains a teacher, a teacher's aide, and, or I'm sorry, a teacher's assistant and two teacher aides. And all four of those individuals will be transferred to other positions in the district. Any question on our potential staffing changes?
I'll just highlight one thing. So what you see here are changes that are supported by our general fund budget. But what you don't see here are the positions and the programs that we're funding through our stimulus funds, which you know we have them through September of 2024 to expend. And Mrs. Bosinski, and I think it was a great recommendation, suggested we keep that separate from this presentation, but that we also, in a future meeting, in, you know, in April or early May, do a separate presentation on our federal stimulus dollars and the programs and positions we're supporting through those funding sources.
So on to our expenditure assumptions. So personnel is projected to increase 5.5% or about 1.6 million. So this captures all of the changes that we just talked about. It captures some of the positions in our stimulus grant that, as planned, we're pulling into general fund. Because when we developed that plan, we wanted to make sure that it was sustainable long-term, and this is the first step in that. And it also includes the open contracts that we've been working on this year with our collective bargaining units. In our benefits, ERS, the ERS rate is set at 11.6%, which is actually a decrease of over 200,000, even though our salaries are going up. That rate dropping almost four points is a decrease in expenditure for us. TRS rate is going up a little bit, 10.29. It's an increase of about 267,000. FICA medal, is the rate is staying the same at 7.65, but it's projected to increase because our salaries are going up. Health insurance is staying pretty stable. So we're looking to increase that about 2.9%, which is $180,000. We've been working with Premier Consulting and our wellness groups to make sure that we're monitoring that and that we're keeping an eye on that. We had a couple of years where we had some really large increases, and it benefits everybody if we can have that be more predictable and more stable and have small increases each year. Our workers' compensation, we are doing very well there as well. The premiums are actually going up 1%, but because of our rating, we will not see an increase in premium, which is great. Our 403B contribution, we decreased that just under $80,000, and that's based on actual expenditures over the last couple of years. In general support, we are increasing that area about $391,000, or just over 17%. And one of the large pieces of this increase is our utilities. So you've seen it at the gas station. You've seen it if you've gotten an electric bill lately. The utilities category includes garbage pickup, natural gas, telephone, electric. It includes everything, and they, we are over budget this year, and we're projected to be a higher budget next year as well. So we wanted to try and capture some of those expenses now. In buildings and grounds, we're increasing that budget a total of $90,000, and that's across several different areas: equipment, contract services, and materials and supplies. And almost all of those were cuts from prior years that now we're able to restore. We've added some services that come out of facilities, such as our security checks over the summer and in the fall, when there's a lot of activity on our campus. And that was coming out of our facilities budget, so we added a little money there. For legal fees, that's based on our expenditures over the last couple of years. So we've been pulling money from other areas of the budget to cover those, so we wanted to address that now. And then in curriculum, there's a $40,000 increase, but it's actually a transfer from another curriculum line. So it wasn't an increase to the overall budget, but it was an increase to the specific category because prior, that 40,000 was in professional development salaries. In instruction, we have a 6% increase. And this includes items such as charter tuition, special education, athletics, and then software increases. So for charter tuition specifically, at our first budget presentation in December, that number was a little bit higher. We had estimated about 55 kids, and that was based on current invoices that we had to date. We hadn't paid them yet, but we had received them. After reconciling those, there were a handful of kids that weren't actually ours. They were either belonged to other districts or they hadn't registered. So we lowered that down to 50 students, which is our current 48 plus a cushion of two, in case we have more bins. That's another reason the central registrar will be great because we'll be able to catch a lot of that right off the bat and not, not have any of that slide through the cracks. Because it is an impact to our budget, and that's just one area. In special education, that number was also higher in our December presentation, and that was just taking our current expenses and rolling them up. Since then, Dr. Otto and the rest of the administrative team have met, and we've gone through not only all the budget lines, but all of the students with the projections of where we think they'll be. So we have a handful of kids graduating. We have a handful of kids changing programs, moving around. So that increase will be just over $100,000. The expenses in athletics are 7,000, a couple thousand in materials and supplies, a couple thousand in equipment. Again, they're areas that have been cut in prior years. So we're trying to get those budgets back to a sustainable level to meet the needs of our programs and our kids. And then the software increase transferred from BOSI's. So that's money that we had in our BOSI's budget, but we're just going to transfer that up into our software lines. So again, it's not a budget increase. It's just transferred to a different position in our budget. So that brings us to BOSI's. In our previous presentation, we were projecting about a million-dollar increase here. So it is a little bit lower. We did go through our participation, and most of our administrators participate in that because there are several buildings that have pieces of what goes into those BOSI services. So we want to make sure that we're including everybody. So the special education tuition and services increases are in there based on projected needs and programming for our kids. The CTE increases are actual enrollment of current year with next year's new cost. So that's where that increase comes from. We had about 91, 92 kids participate this year. The additional PD days are days that we'll be adding in BOSI's to have their PD trainers come into district and work with our teachers. And that's managed through our curriculum office with Dr. Shanahan. So we bring in specialists in different areas. And this, these funds in particular are going to be focused on science and math and the different standards in our new, our Amplify Science programs. The athletic software and membership dues are general increases, enhancing the registration process for athletic signups as well as the software that we use called Huddle that allows our coaches to have better stats, better information on their teams and with the kids. Some miscellaneous increase across all services of 88,000. That's just because their services increase every year, just like all the other expenses do. And then that $30,000, and that's the transfer we talked about moving up into the other part of the budget. So the one area I didn't mention is the IPA, which is our third instructional IPA payment. So again, that's part of our long-range plan, and we'll be recapping that in the next couple of meetings or so. But that's still on target, and that is our technology replacement plan. But because of the increased BOSI's aid that that generates and some transfers that we made in the budget, we were able to make those increases without having an overall increase to our budget. So it didn't negatively affect our taxpayers. But we're allowed to maintain the structure of our technology, hardware, and software so that it meets the needs of our kids and our program, which is always increasing and changing. Transportation, we went back to our typical transportation. We took out the 800,000. We planned to bring the transportation committee together early next year, as well as some other committees to look at potential bell time changes and transportation changes. We explored it for this year to change in the fall, but First Student was uncertain that they would be able to have enough drivers. So even though we could fit it in our budget, it doesn't help if we don't, if we have empty buses and they don't have the drivers. Still today, there, we still have shortages every day that First Student was covering. So we didn't want to risk putting all that money into the budget, making all of these sweet changes to each of our buildings, and then not being able to have it find success. So we will look to do that work next year. But meantime, we have just under $100,000 increase, which is a contract extension to our current contract provisions. But we did increase our after-school buses, both at, both elementaries and at the middle school, based on the needs of our students. So overall, we have an expenditure budget of 68.3 million, which is an increase in spending of 6.19%, or just under $4 million. And we have a balanced budget, 68.3 million. This is the slide I was referencing earlier when we talk about the demonstration of our reliance on our state aid increases. So you can see next year, we have a gap of 1.4 million, and that's with no state aid increases, and then it would continue to grow. So obviously, we know we'll have some sort of state aid next year. So that's not a huge concern right now, but it's something that we want to make sure that we're staying focused on because it's one of our main sources of revenue, and we don't have a lot of control over the other revenues with the tax cap. So we have a balanced budget, 6.2% increase or an increase of $4 million, both on the revenue and the expenditure side. The revenue has a negative tax gap at negative point seven percent, but that is offset by the increased pilot revenue that will come in. And our expenditures have increases in several areas. Half of that is personnel and benefits. A large portion is BOSI's increases. And then the rest of the funds in the other categories totaled at $4 million. Balanced budget, fund balance is 1 million with reserves at 80,000. And both of those are fully offset by expenditure lines, so on both sides. So if you decided we weren't going to use fund balance, we could take away those expenditure lines, and we wouldn't have reliance on our fund balance to support our operating budget, which is a great place to be. We keep that in there because that flexibility on the expenditure side is critical, and it has been a lifesaver the last couple of years. We don't have a need for gap closers, but if we did, we use the salary breakage from our retirements, so our gap closers stay the same as they are each year.
Well, that's an interesting point you bring up. Normally, in March, we are presenting a budget to you that has a gap, and we're anxiously awaiting the New York State budget to get finalized by the April 1 deadline, if they have an on-time budget, so that we can make those final decisions before our April presentation where we present our finalized budget or proposed budget. In this particular case, there's really good news coming out of Albany right now. As you all know, the budget process from Albany starts with the executive proposal from the governor. And then each house, the Assembly and the Senate, send out their budget proposals, and then they get together and finalize the budget by April 1. As it relates to foundation aid, all three entities are in agreement. So the, you know, the executive proposal committed to half of the full funding amount next year, and then the following year, they're expecting to go the other half so that we're fully funding foundation aid. And the Assembly and the Senate accepted the governor's proposal. So that puts us in a really good position right now to present a balanced budget that we think will stand the test of time over the next couple of weeks. There are, there's two other things I'd like to note about the one-house budgets that have been put out. One, they've stayed clear of policy in their budget presentations, which hasn't always been the case. You're all familiar with Race to the Top and all those initiatives that came through the budget process under the previous governor. And I think right now, the governor and the legislators have agreed that they're going to steer clear of policy moves in their budget and stick more to funding initiatives and funding those initiatives. The second thing that I'm keeping a keen eye on that could have some budgetary impacts, maybe not for next year, but down the road, is there is a proposal in both of the one-house budgets to increase the amount of the capital outlay. So currently, it's $100,000 that we're allowed to do, and we can do construction of about $85,000 after you take away fees. And, you know, we can do that without having the submittal process to state aid and the approval and the lengthy time that that takes. The, I'm just looking at my notes here. The Assembly has proposed to increase that amount from 100 to 250K, mostly based on inflation and, you know, the amount of construction that you can do for 100,000. And the Senate has proposed to increase it from a range of 250K to 500K. So I know we have our capital outlays planned for next year, and we have a couple-year outlook for those. But if they increase the amount that we can do through the capital outlay, we certainly would want to adjust our budget and take advantage of that. So that's one thing I'm keeping an eye on as the state finalizes their budget.
So our next scheduled time to meet with you on our budget is April 5. So at that time, hopefully, we'll have the state projections on their budget, so we'll know what that's going to look like. And we talked about also bringing to you a summary of where we are with the stimulus positions that Superintendent Miller mentioned. Not only what we planned on doing this year, how that worked out, where that went according to plan, where we had to pivot a little bit, and then what our plans are moving forward into next year based on what we know now, which was much different than what it was in June of last year.
Yeah, so I think in that regard, we're looking for a little feedback from the board. Barring any major changes out of Albany, which I don't anticipate this year, you know, we would like this to be our proposed budget. So if the state finalizes their budget by April 1, we would pivot to an April 1 presentation. by April 1, we would pivot to an April 1 presentation on our stimulus funds, as opposed to another presentation where we come out and say, "There's no changes, it's the same thing as last time." So I think we would want maybe you to poll the board and ask them, "Are they okay with this budget as it's proposed?", certainly after you have the opportunity to ask any clarifying questions, but, and then barring any major changes from the state, we would, you know, have this budget on the agenda April 17 for your adoption, but we wouldn't bother you with another presentation that doesn't have any new information on the first meeting in April.
And with that, are we comfortable with submitting the negative tax cap to the controller? It's currently submitted at a .06, which is where we were, so we need to go in and revise that, so we're going to stay with this.
Does anyone have any further questions on Mrs. Bozinski?
I just had a question about the registrar position. What kind of position is that?
We're anticipating it to be a principal clerk typist. The position will obviously have some clerical nature to it, but will also be a solo position, so they'll be overseeing their own work, managing their own schedule, making sure they're getting to each of the buildings, but they won't be working directly in an office with other clerical, which is why we thought the principal clerk typist, principal clerk was the most appropriate title for it.
Yeah, and the registration, the registration at the buildings is currently being done by principal clerks, so it makes sense.
Two questions. Are we anticipating any increase in the community education budget?
That budget has been somewhat steady. It hasn't had any dips, major dips or major increases. That's something that we've talked right before COVID started. We talked about trying to build that program and have more offerings, and then COVID hit. So for one year, we didn't do anything with it, and then this past year was the first year that we were starting to get everybody back. So it's definitely something on the radar for the future. I don't know if it'll have big increases next year. The biggest component of the community ed program is the summer program, summer camp, and then there are some basketball and wrestling programs that go throughout the year.
I felt, I could be wrong, I thought that number was like 1,300 or something.
It used to include the before and after-school program, which is now part of JFK. So now, it's only the summer camp, the wrestling, it's mostly sports camps, but that's why.
And then, the interest earnings that we, we can say?
Ms. Williams is watching the T-bills, and after our last conversation, the rates were right where you thought they were. We have major state aid payments that hit mid-March to the fourth week of March, so we're waiting for those to come in, and then we will have more information on that. But they were .3 for a three-month, .6 for a six-month. So we have a staggered approach with cash flow, with what we know we're going to need in the summer, when we don't have funds coming in, making sure that the T-bill structure matures in such a way that we have funds available and that they're not tied up, but that we're also maximizing any potential interest earnings without tying it all up and then having rates go up and then we lost out on that.
There are even more now.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, they went to like .48 or something recently.
Yeah, even the second one, .84.
Yeah, but they, that's even prior to the announcement that he hasn't even made yet. Yeah.
So you're kind of like, all right.
I did not adjust this for it, but yes, we're watching.
Good.
It's exciting.
Take a tape going across your screen.
I know, right?
Well, it's exciting when, I think it was Mr. Vivallo asked one time for like a comparison to, of our interest revenue from like 2005, yeah, compared to recent, and when you look at that number, I mean, it's staggering, the difference. So if our economy trends back in that direction, that will certainly be a good source of revenue for us.
Except for borrowing costs going.
Well, right.
So I'm going to ask everyone if you're okay with the budget as presented, Officer Smith?
The budget is presented tonight or April 5?
Yes. As presented tonight, because there's no tweaks in it. It's a balanced budget.
Assuming it stays the same.
Are we confident that we know tweaks coming out of Albany?
Assuming there are no major changes. Are you?
With that caveat, I'm okay.
Well, if there are changes, we'd come back and do a presentation April 5.
Yeah.
With what we know now?
Yeah.
Yes, and I'm all right.
Yeah.
As am I.
And the tax cap, we're good with the tax cap?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm sure the taxpayers will be thrilled.
It's an interesting, interesting budget, to be increasing expenditures 4 million, increasing revenue 4 million, but yet a negative .69 tax gap. It doesn't seem realistic, but I'll take it.
Thank you.
It's catching up for years.
We will need a motion for new business items.
Making a motion for new business.
Excuse me for one, do we want to, do we need to read in?
Sure, I can do that very quickly.
Item H?
So item H will now read nominate three candidates for election to the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, Mary Bosi, Andrew Liv, and Eric Bornstein.
Okay. Now we will need that motion for new business items.
I'll make a motion for new business items, E1, A through K, 2, B through E, and 3, G.
Do we have a second? To Vivallo. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, E1, A through K, 2, B through E, and 3, G, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Ms. Costini, do we have any follow-up, up action items?
Okay.
And we will need a motion to?
I'm sorry, can I just add one thing before your motion?
Sure.
I just wanted to recognize Maura McDonald, she's in the crowd tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Maura was just approved to be hired as our payroll clerk in Mike Bellisle's office to replace a person that we have that's resigning, and she's been in the district at the high school for a number of years, and now is taking on a new role that we're excited to have her in, so.
Maura, well, congratulations to you. I'm sorry I had to, I did not know. He's sitting in a new spot, normally he's here. Congratulations to you, though. Are we good now?
Yeah.
Don't worry, I have options for me.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
We will need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll make a motion to?
Convene to executive.
Convene to executive session regarding employment of a particular person. I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, everyone, for coming.